All right, I'm going to open this meeting of the Nottingham Board of Selectmen for Monday, November 4th, 2019. And before we begin, would you all rise and give me the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, bid to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda is manifests.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of number four, 2019, and payroll manifest.
I had one question on that that I asked Chris to answer before this meeting, so...
On by.
Well, you know, let him finish his motion and then we'll, you know, we'll get it for discussion.
All right, well, we'll just start over.
Sorry.
No, don't, it's all good, it's all good. Make a motion to approve accounts payable manifest of November 4th, and payroll manifest of November 5th.
Now, I need a second.
Second.
Second. Now, open for discussion. And you need Chris.
So, my question was if you looked, it was on like the second page or whatever on the manifests, there was the Highway Department spent six, or $2,778 on the 2016 Mack truck, and I was curious what that bill was for, since the average bills in the other trucks were, you know, for minor maintenance is a $3,000 bill on one of our trucks seemed a lot higher than normal, so I was curious what the cost of why it was there.
Chris, could you get the bill? Please. Thank you. Who is it for?
McDevitt Trucks.
Transmission, wiring, harness, and transmission service.
$2,000?
$3,000 almost.
Nope.
$2,700 and something.
Is that warranty work?
Did you have one?
No. I've got it on screen.
Okay. We're using HCR for repairs.
Again, we've got McDevitt on there, so I have no idea why, who, or what, just asking the question of where was it?
There might have been a little bit of warranty to that. Well, the whole thing obviously wasn't.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know the, I got the answer to yours, what was it, and that's as far as I got, was transmission and harness.
And that's for a 2016 truck? That's, how many miles are on that truck?
84,000.
Yeah.
But, a larger vehicle does require a bigger expense tag with it too, but that does seem a little...
It was just something noted that, I guess it's done, because we're paying them.
Yeah.
Deal with that when we get to it.
Good catch.
Hey, you notice the $33,000 for the police car that just came in?
So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, just wanted to know what it was.
Okay, okay. All right, well, we have a motion and a second, so, all in favor? All right. All right. 4-0. All right, action items from the last meeting. It did not look like we designated any. No, no. I'm going to wait for Donna to be here, because I know she's going to want to read through them. Reports from assigned boards and committees, budget?
Budget meets on the 14th.
Okay, planning?
The planning board.
Say again?
Better meeting. Going over a lot of the stuff from the zoning board with the two women from Stratford Region once, Chris?
Yeah.
So, it's going along good, and they meet again on the 13th.
Okay. Who else? CIP, that would be Donna. So, we'll get that next week, yeah, 300th?
I wasn't there, I was tied up at work, but we got one of the guys who was there.
Good news, we have available for your dining and dancing pleasure and for your Christmas shopping, medallions for your Christmas treat or celebrations at $20 apiece that will be available in the town office, and they look beautiful, so we're going to cloud it out.
So, is it there now?
Yep.
They've ordered them, and we paid for them, so are they there, Chris?
They're on the front counter, on display with the hats and the t-shirts.
And if you look at them, they really...
They are nice.
If you want to buy one, forget about, I'm Jewish, so I wouldn't use it on my Christmas tree. I hang it under the menorah.
Okay.
By eight will give you a deal.
Remember the eleventh commandment, thou shalt not pay retail.
All right, and just for the benefit of people at home, if you didn't hear that, the 300th Anniversary Committee has medallions for sale in the town office for, oh, how did it?
$20.
$20 each.
And they're beautiful, they're really...
And they're beautiful.
Collectors' items.
I did, they're very nice.
They came out much better than we expected.
Okay. Any other committees? Marston?
Looks nice.
Yeah, yeah.
Looks like it's coming along nicely.
Yeah, drove on it Saturday, looked pretty good. We got a lot of lube.
Yeah, they're just about done with this, this phase, we've got, we had that, the engineering or survey problem or whatever it was that had the heights wrong, remember Donna explained that, we would've been trucking in material to try and fill the hole that was left from that, we were actually taking stuff from the ledge farm project and going right to Marston with it, of all things, and taking stuff from the pit too, so, but there's still more of that that's going to be needed to finish the backside over there. The field itself is at the grade we need it to be, but the, some of the surrounding areas is still below where we need it to be, so, we'll be, I don't know what the plan is there, we'll be chipping away at it, we don't need that to plant grass or anything, so...
Is that part of the parking area, or?
No, it's in the, I believe the biggest gap right now is in the back corner, not the parking area.
For future expansion kind of thing, or for runoff?
No, for, to get the drainage right, and the slope that's on the backside there is dips into the wet part down there.
Okay. Okay. There's been, I've seen some commentary in social media, people are asking if it's open to the public during construction, I assume it's because it's an active construction site, it's off limits?
Yeah, we haven't posted anything, I mean, anytime there's heavy equipment, it's a good idea to not be around it, we should, we should think about how we're going to post that while the grass is growing and whatnot, we still want people to have some access, but not on...
Is there a way we could put a chain across with a sign, no trespassing, while on the construction?
Be nice.
That the contract will have to put up every time they leave?
Yeah, I think they may, I think they, I think they're just about done.
Oh, are they?
Yeah. There may be equipment there, I think, I think the equipment's waiting for their next job.
All right.
We're that close to done with this.
Okay.
But we will need to talk about protecting the stuff that's there.
Yeah, people from driving on it.
Yeah. I'll get with it, Matt, on that.
Looks nice though.
Okay. Any other committees I got about? No, okay. All right. Town Administrator Report.
We have a tax rate, just about 11 o'clock this morning, that process pretty well finalized, better than what we talked about, I think it was two weeks ago, the 2019 rate's going to be 2250 per thousand.
2250?
Which is down from 2264 last year, since the last numbers you saw, we added the revenue sharing from the state legislature and the governor, that we, we actually got the check, and now that's money in hand, and moved the motor vehicle revenue number up a little bit to reflect actuals, we always play that one conservatively, but we're going to, we're going to hit even the conservative number early, so, and a few other minor tweaks, school side finalized, that's the, the big reason for the, for the dip is the, is the school district, it's mostly unspent budgeted funds from the year that just ended in June, that money, you can think of it as a budget surplus, is the biggest number in that change, that all falls right back into the tax rate in the same year, so, the school board has a few pieces that they have the option to take out and put in some reserves, depending on what the school district gives them authority to do, and then everything else falls to the, to the tax rate, so that's where the biggest number was, I chatted with the superintendent briefly this morning, there's a couple other things going on between the SAU and the, and the school district that may have moved that number a little bit, but when three quarters of the tax rate goes to the school anytime, you know, that's really what's driving the number, and that's what drove it this year, is that, those savings at the school, on the school side, so...
Again, Chris, that's 2250?
2250. It's a decrease of seven tenths of one percent, 14 percent, 14 cents. We have one more piece of paper to sign, are you in town this week? Assessors are going to need to sign something, I was hoping to have it tonight, but we, we didn't hear back from Concord in time, we may have tax bills out at the end of this week, depending on how fast that goes and how fast the tax collector can do his piece, and they'll be due 30 days after that, so, it's looking like the first week of December, something like that for due date.
Chris, I just had one question. I don't even know if you know this number off the top of your head, but what was the return from the school from last year?
I can, yeah, give me two seconds, I'll call it out.
Actually, it's right here, it's about 307,000.
So... Well, yeah, there's a, there's a few different things that bake into that, so...
Maybe this isn't the avenue for it, maybe...
The, it's in the neighborhood of 760,000.
That's this year?
This year. Yeah. Like I said, there's, there's a few other things in there, but I can't explain well enough, but some of it's, you know, some cash moving around, but that number, that number bounces around, it was 300 last year, it was...
I thought it was four last year.
500 the year before, 600 the year before that, so, it feels a lot bigger because it's twice what it was last year, but that number does bounce around quite a bit. I suspect, I don't know, I suspect it's driven a lot by high school tuitions and special ed costs, but don't know. So, Budget Committee question. The one, two is the driving factor is when a child's a kid, that affects a lot of the money. Special ed, something like, special ed, yeah. That could be it, I, like I said, I don't know for sure. County and state education tax are very stable, on the town side, the, the biggest driver was the change in the veterans' tax credits, it looks like that cost about 117,000, cost is the wrong word, but, you know, it was the biggest move around the number. Questions on that, anything else you wonder about there?
114,000?
Yes.
What was it?
Oh, it was 117.
117.
Yeah, that, there, there's one or two, the count of veterans getting the credit is different by one or two, so that moves the number, but the vast majority of it is the change in the value of that credit.
Right.
Couple calendar things, the holiday parade is December 7th, your traditional role is to put on a Christmas hat and hand out candy and that.
What time?
10?
It's in the morning, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's 10.
Are we allowed to post all that?
I, I don't have an opinion about that. The fire department's Christmas party is that evening, you're all invited to that, and Shelley asked me to pass along this invite to the New Hope Church Thanksgiving Dinner, which is in two weeks, pass that down. And then, one, if we have a few minutes, I kind of mentioned this in passing a couple times, but I wanted to give you a little bit more background on the stormwater asset management, does that ring a bell to anybody? We got a grant for implementing a stormwater asset management plan, we applied for this grant from the state to pay for a consultant to inventory our stormwater assets, which are primary, primarily culverts and ditches, and we're going to do that in 2020, hopefully. The way the program is set up, you apply to the state, and it's set up as a loan forgiveness, so they loan you the money, you go out, you buy the, you know, you buy the service, and then, and the state gives you the money after the fact, so you kind of have to borrow to, to get to the point when you're done with it, it's a lot of gymnastics for 30,000 or 40,000 bucks, but it's all paid for by them, so it's, it's worth the effort, we're gonna, we're posting an RFQ, Request for Qualifications for Engineers, right now, generally what we're looking for, an engineer helped us do this, helped us get the grant application in and, and be successful, we're going to inventory all our culverts and our swales and ditches, measure them, get them on a GIS map, assess their condition and size, and have all that in, in a database in GIS set up for the first time, we just, I don't know, maybe a year ago, got our roads really where we wanted to in the GIS arena, this, you know, is a nice next step for that, it sets up, it will, it will become a, if we wanted to, a work order management system for the Highway Department, asset management in terms of what do we need to fix first, you know, where are our conditions, where the, where the biggest risks, what's the, the cost of failure here, when, in what order do you want to do all these things? So, it's kind of the next logical step in getting us into a data-driven decision-making process, it will involve training our staff how to use it in the field, you know, you can, a couple years from now, our highway crews will be out with tablets, anytime they're working on something, they'll be able to punch in a thing or two, you know, notice something's wrong with this culvert, or I'm out here working on doing X, Y, and Z, we're just now rolling out things like, how much material do you use during a storm, we're going to track that as a data now, this system will pick up all that in a couple of years, and we'll be able to really do a lot more, either from a mapping or a finance point of view, once we have this system in place, we'll be able to, you know, use some kind of work order system, we find out we got a problem, we can punch something in, they can prioritize it, see what they spent to fix it, if anything, it'll, it'll do all of that in the end, it's probably going to be Google big, Google map based, because that's the easiest one to use for our frontline people, but anyway, that's where we're headed with that, it's going to require us asking town meeting for permission to borrow that money to go do it, in anticipation of getting paid back, so it'll be a warrant article, our engineer, whoever we end up picking, will hold our hand through that whole process, we'll get reimbursed at the end, it's going to be essentially free, and it won't cost much to maintain using that platform, so, if you see something about stormwater asset management, that's what it is.
Geis?
Geographic Information Systems. Google Maps.
Okay.
Any questions for Chris on that?
Yeah, that was something Sean did in a prior life, and grabbed ahold of somebody to help us get that grant, and there we go. I think that is all I have for you.
Okay. Any questions for Chris on any of his topics? No? All right, moving on to general business, tax deed waivers.
Yeah, I thought we did. Here, uh, here, this is what we're talking about right now, I got an extra one of these.
Do you have Donna's?
Uh, no, I left it in the office, I knew she wasn't here. Do you want me to just start there, or do you want to start on?
No, go ahead.
So, you created a policy a few months ago, we put that to bed, this is the, this is essentially an annual process, the tax collector has to do this once liens reach that third year, the list that you have, I have a recommendation for each of them, because I'm familiar with each of them, generally speaking, I'm, I'm suggesting that you waive them for a whole host of reasons, and I've laid those out for you, we all have the same document we're looking at, right?
Yep.
The major reasons for waiving are, the, either the value isn't that big in dollars or as a percentage of the value of the property, there's a number that we have reason to believe are about to be sold, anytime something sells, we get paid, so rather than get in the way of that process, they're in different stages, some are, you know, have closing dates, and others are, we're doing background work to get them ready to go to market, but it looks like they're really going to go to market, that's generally a better solution for everybody than for us to, you know, come in and, and break up a sale if there's one brewing, there's a couple with liabilities associated with them, either possible or likely, those are either, there's something, we know there's something wrong with the property that if we were to take ownership of it, would be a problem for us.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
Just go back two steps, when you said you don't, for sale of property?
Yep.
If there's an assessed value placed on that property, and the person selling that property is asking double what the assessed value is, you know, the chance of that selling might be slim to none, so, that's, it could be for sale next year, and we're sitting in the same boat.
Yes.
We're not going to use this same reasoning next year for this product, this...
Are you looking at, there's one on the very, on the very bottom...
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that one, that one is not in the waive it because it's on the market, I did, that, because that's not a viable...
Okay.
Sale arrangement, that is in the, well, let's, we'll come back to that one, but it's not in that group.
Okay.
Because you're right, it's not, it's not realistic.
You're talking about the one that says waived sale pending?
Correct.
On the thing, so we're just talking about those right now.
That's the one, I just, yeah, I just went through that one.
Yep.
We'll come back down to that one. So, potential liabilities, we've got one that's probably should have had a disabled exemption on it for some time, and we just finally made some progress on that, Board of Assessors will see something on that very soon, that I think is going to keep this, may keep this property, get it back on track and keep it in the resident's hands. Now, so those are all the ones that you have some good reason to waive, I think, that's up to you, but that's my recommendation to you, there are two that I think are going to find their way to tax deed-ing relatively quickly, those are the ones that say waive pending environmental assessment, first priority for reconsideration late 2019, those are two rental, what we think are rental properties, the owners live in other towns, or for whatever, what other information we have about them, before we, and this is in the policy, before we take anything, we want to take a look at it, make sure there's not...
Which, where?
On the bottom of the second page, waive pending environmental assessment.
Okay, sorry, I was looking on the other back page.
You with me?
Mm-hmm.
So, we want to, we want to get on the property and look at it before we take it, make sure there's not a bunch of oil barrels or something out back, you know, something crazy like that, to do that, we have to notify the owner that we're coming, there's a, there's a way in law that we can help ourselves and walk, walk on the property and inspect it, we have given notice to those two owners, instead of date that we're going to do that inspection, I suspect that that inspection is going to come back, as there's no reason not to deed them, and then, for those two properties, I'll be coming back to you in December and saying, you waived this in November, but I think you should revoke that and tax deed it, I suspect that's where those two end up in December. They could also get paid, that's, you know, you get, people pay their outstanding tax bill, they get off this list, and that's fine.
Top two, which two are we referring to?
The top two, there's the last two on the second page, one on Snow Lane, one on Kelsey Road.
Down here. Bottom of the second page.
Oh, all right, sorry. You're doing the same thing I was doing.
All right. I'm not alone. Decided, Chris?
Yeah, yeah.
So, once the inspections are done?
Yeah, so the, the inspections are scheduled for December 3rd, that's us telling them we're coming on December 3rd.
Yeah.
You know, whether you like it or not, that'll be the building inspector, maybe I'll go along, I don't know, we haven't, we haven't done this stuff before, but we'll, we'll give you a quick report after December 3rd that says, this is what the condition appears to be, there's no liability there, if we don't see anything that looks like a liability, if we don't hear anything else from the, the owner that makes it seem like we're going to get what's owed, these aren't owner occupied properties, so by your policy, they don't, they don't necessarily qualify for a waiver, so, those two would be the first, that we would say, you can revoke these waivers if you want, and they would go to tax deed, so, you know, you make a decision now on waiving these things, you can undo that decision at any time by law, so, this is not a waive it now, you can't touch it again for a year situation.
Right, right.
You can change your mind anytime. So, those are the first two that I, I suspect will be coming back to you to say, if you want to change your mind, there's, there's no, you know, liability concern that we can see, and that would be your first meeting after December 3rd, probably.
Okay. And then the next batch, second priority?
Those are the, those are in the same situation, but they are, as far as we can tell, they're all owner occupied, and this goes back to the one you were asking about, John, these have, most of them have just come over that threshold that you set of 20,000 or 20 percent, the, and I, I think we'll go through that list, once we get these first two, get that process, make sure that works, we'll revisit these with the same process, perhaps in dollar order, I don't, I don't know, we'll see what we can learn, I have not had conversations with these property owners, about one of them, but we'll do the same thing with those, and you can make decisions on those throughout 2020, whenever you, whenever we get those inspections done.
Good.
Or whenever you want to tackle them. Is that a good approach as far as, those that don't quite qualify by your...
Yeah, no, I, I think it's a good way to, to break it out, you know, like I said, it's consistent with the policy, and then you've got the ones that need to be inspected before we can make a decision, so...
Yes, it's hard to know when to, we can inspect them at any time, but until the, the owner gets that, we're going, the notice from the tax collector that says, we're going to tax deed this property, this is the last notice you're going to get, until they get that, it doesn't make a lot of sense to notify them that we're coming to inspect it, so we have to do it kind of in that order, unfortunately, the law gives the same amount of time for both of those things, you...
Yeah.
So, we can't...
Yeah, no, I think it's a good way to break it out. You know, like I said, it's consistent with the policy and then you've got the ones that need to be inspected before we can make a decision, so.
Yes, it's hard to know when to. We can inspect them at any time, but until the owner gets that, we're going, the notice from the tax collector that says, we're going to tax deed this property. This is the last notice you're going to get. Until they get that, it doesn't make a lot of sense to notify them that we're coming to inspect it. So, we have to do it kind of in that order. Unfortunately, the law gives the same amount of time for both of those things.
Yeah.
So, we can't.
And not concurrently?
Right. You, no, we can, we can do it almost concurrently, but the, it's tough to get the clocks to line up.
Right.
Where we can get the notice, an inspection done and back to you in time. We'll, we might get a little better at that next year if we, once we go through it.
Tony? I just want to compliment the board on your work on, you hammered this policy out. It's on the website, but it's just an example of your leadership of taking over this area was undefined and I want to, the policy has made your decision a lot easier.
Yeah, it did. It was all of us. It wasn't just.
No, I wonder, but it was just nice to, because I remember there was many debates about that, about how to come up with the right formula with the blending between being the nice guy and also being the revenue side of it.
Right.
So, that's a compliment.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right, so.
Do you need just to say, go for the first three allowed to go tax deed?
Yeah, I skipped right over those. Those fit your criteria. They are vacant land. I gave you a little bit of payment history on them. You can see the amounts on the last page. Not big dollars, but long time occupants on, or tenants on this list, so to speak.
Okay.
We have seen this process inspire payment from time to time, right at the deadline or even immediately after the deadline. We had one go through this a couple of years ago on Rule 4 that the owner came back and paid what was owed him. We've been to that point once with one of these properties already. We got up to the deadline, said we're going to take it and the bill got paid at the 11th hour, right before that happened. So, maybe that'll happen again and we can move along.
Okay. All right, so you need a motion to go forward with this, right?
Yeah. The, your action is to waive, not to deed, so you have to tell the tax collector what not to. That's what my suggested motion there is.
Okay. This is going to be a long one.
Yeah.
We'll do this, because you got to read the map, the lot and the sub number for all of the, everything that's going to be waived.
Yes, and I have it electronically and I'll send it to you.
Yeah, yeah.
As long as they're not going to change anything.
See, so look at the last page.
Yeah, I get that.
See these top three?
Yeah.
Don't mention those. You're going to do, like, starting down here, right?
Yeah.
You're just map, lot, sub. You're going to read all those numbers, not the addresses or names or anything, just map, lot and the sub.
If that's easier to read, you can use that one too. It's the same list.
Okay. So, there's your motion language and then you can just read the.
That here.
Read the numbers.
All right, these are separate columns, all right?
Yeah.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen waived the deeds and notified the tax collector that they will not accept the tax collector's deeds on the following properties pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 8038. Map 23, Lot 2, Sub 105. Map 23, Lot 2, Sub 18. Map 23, Lot 2, Sub 143. Map 23, Lot 2, Sub 112. Map 23, Lot 2, Sub 100. Map 16, Lot 18, Sub 3. Map 15, Lot 12. Map 28, Lot 12. Map 8, Lot 20. Map 6, Lot 4. Map 1, Lot 2. Map 1, Lot 3. Map 1, Lot 12. Map 10, Lot 7. Map 24, Lot 103. Map 13, Lot 5, Sub 42. Map 68, Lot 110. Map 1, Lot 179. Map 24, Lot 143. Map 39, Lot 24. Map 20, Lot 7, Sub 8. Map 24, Lot 89. Map 12, Lot 9, Sub 1. Map 24, Lot 141, Sub 2. And Map 37, Lot 25, Sub 4. Do I have a second?
A second, Ben.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? 40.
Ben, if you'd like, we can get you a job as a bingo caller.
Are you sure? I put people to sleep.
Tony, if you could take the document he just read and signed it, I can give it to the tax collector.
Okay. Next item, Class 5 road standards.
How do you want to do, Gwen?
Actually, I'm just going to shoot through this real quick. So, the draft that we were working on last week has gone for a legal review and has been edited. So, what I'd like everyone to do between now and next week, when Donna gets back, is to read through this and read the edits and then we can have a more informed discussion as a complete board next week. Sound good?
What are you doing?
Ah, I'm sorry, two weeks, yes.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Yes, yes?
Yeah, I don't agree with anything what the lawyer wrote, but we'll discuss that.
What's that? Say that again?
I don't agree with anything what the lawyer wrote, but we'll discuss that.
Yeah, that's why I want to discuss it.
Sure.
When we're all here.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. All right. All right, now, 7 o'clock. We have Gwen Friend to discuss the 300th Anniversary Recipe Book. Come on up.
Hi.
Hi, thank you for coming.
No, thank you for having me. Oh, John brought the recipe. All right. I'm Gwen Friend. I was down on the road. I volunteered to be the coordinator of a 300th Anniversary Cookbook for the Triscentineal Commission, which was going pretty well, but we don't have enough recipes yet. I did want to talk a little bit about how this book is going to be a regular, like, town cookbook, you know, like, we'll use some of the some in the castle library, but it will also be, it'll include some historical stuff. So, I'm actually going to try to start with some of the ways the Abenaki ate and what they ate and what they raised and then of course fishing and hunting, a little bit of that and then take, do a little history on how the first settlers ate and then gradually coming forward as houses were built and fireplaces that you could really cook on and then cookstoves and wood cookstoves and gas cookstoves and, you know, and talk about the changing of the food, some animals. Not too much, a little bit, just to spice it up a little bit. I'm also going to include some excerpts from each of the town cookbooks that I've been able to find and that the historical commission has helped me with a little. The oldest one I have is from 1898 and it was published by Women's Auxiliary of the Universalist Church. I think I have to go talk to them and make sure it's okay for me, but I'm sure they'll be okay with that. And then there's not another one that I can find until, geez, I forget now, but it's, actually, I have it written down somewhere, but there are four or five more. Those are Women's Auxiliary, the Fire Department, there's the Library did one, Women's Club, I think, did one and I think one other. So, I'll use several excerpts, writing that, there's names you'll know, you know, try to pick out ones with names and so forth and, so do a little bit of that and I'll include some excerpts. And then a very regular cookbook. It's going to try to be modern, updated, you know, vegetarian meals, gluten free, all that kind of stuff that we can identify. Categories are, and I've looked over a bunch of other cookbooks that were done and there's a lot of different ways to do categories. I'll just continue to review it with people at the 300th Commission until we think it's right and we'll put it out. But I'm looking for more recipes. We're about halfway where we need to be and somebody passed along my little message, which was, if anybody can bring a recipe tonight, that would be great. If you haven't, that's okay, but I have to tell you that. It's interesting looking at you without Donning here because we really need recipes from men this time. You know and I know, this is no longer just a woman's operation here, cooking, cooking for your families. For anybody's parties, grilling, grilling seems to be a man's thing. So, the more recipes I can get from men, the better. And one of the reasons I'm here tonight is that actually Go Garnett suggested that we reach out to the town leadership and I thought that was a great idea. So, I started with Boris Selectman, which seemed to me to be right there at the top of the town leadership. That's where you get to make. So, wow, any questions? Any comments, suggestions?
How many recipes are going to be in the book? Like 100?
About 200.
200.
I actually counted up from the books that I have from Nottingham, also a couple others that, you know, selected from other towns over the years for one reason or another. And it's about what it runs and it's about right, I think. I think a lot less than that. One category that I don't see in these other books so much is breakfast. And so, and I think that's a good one. You know, so it's, instead of putting pancakes under quick breads, you put them under breakfast and I do the recipe for the blueberry syrup that's used at the Historical Society's annual pancake breakfast. But people have good recipes for, you know, eggs and sausage and things like that, so.
I wonder with this body of cocktail recipe might be more appropriate.
Well, well, we do have a category which will lead beverages, so we could do some more.
I'm looking for fuel for that one.
I'm not looking at any one in particular.
They're looking at you.
I noticed that.
One of them is definitely an alcohol recipe. I have to get what it is now, but, you know, there's hot chocolate in there too and non-alcoholic punch, but beverages is a good category. I'm thinking, trying to think outside the box a little bit, like, you know, there's a lot of people who pack lunches for their kids every day and keep putting in, here's a good packed lunch. The kids love this, when I do this one. Or different things, Play-Doh. Somebody gave me two recipes for cleaning products that they thought were great. So, you know, anything that comes to mind in a picnic, whatever. My sister was talking about doing a recipe for a happy kid and you say things like, you know, four quarts of dirt and one quart of water and, you know, a few sticks. So, I don't know, but something like that, but, so.
When will the book be ready, you think?
We're aiming to have it ready by the town meeting. So, I mean, recipes pretty soon. When's the town meeting? March 12th or something, right?
Something like that.
Give or take.
Whenever. Early March.
Second week, yeah.
Yeah, second week of March, so, you know, we'd like to have it ready by then.
So, is.
So, this is not going part of like the 300 or?
It.
I figured this did be ready, like, you wanted it ready for like the?
You can't give.
2021 or?
Your deadline. I'll never get it done. I know it's actually, there's been quite a bit of discussion about that. And it's a fun, it's partly a fundraiser too. We're going to sell these books. We're not going to use ads. We're going to save the ads for, I guess, an ad book, program book or something at the end, but, so we'll sell them and we'll use it as a fundraiser. And if people, if they're popular enough, we'll reprint it and sell some more. But that was, the idea was we would start selling it at the town meeting this year, next year.
So, I was going to, are you intending to incorporate historical recipes as well as contemporary ones?
Yeah.
Okay, because that was something I had brought up during one of those early brainstorming.
Oh, yeah.
Sessions was find out what people were cooking and eating back then in the 1600s and 1700s.
Exactly.
The, I vacation a lot in Quebec and when they have their Festival of New France every year, it's what they do in their little cookbook that they, that they produce. It's all recipes from what they call the old regime. That's their term for the colonial era.
Yeah.
And it's, I mean, obviously, there's only so many ways you can roast a woodchuck, but you get the idea, right?
Yeah.
So, if there were, if there was a way to find recipes that were common in this area back then, it would be a good idea to incorporate those.
No, I agree. I'm going to try to find those. The oldest ones I have, I have one that the descendant of the Abenaki has given me, which is kind of a updated version of like an Abenaki type stew. And then I have 1898 stuff. And 1898 stuff is very different from what we do now. And I think if you, when we go back and I'll be doing more research on this, like, when did they first settle there? 1630 or 40, right?
Yeah.
Early on.
Yeah, I imagine back then there'd be a lot more one pot meals, soups, stews, parages, you know.
And I think that the, that there was an interesting shift for the early settlers from wheat as being stable to corn. And I think that would be interesting to look at. I think the corn was very different, of course.
Yeah, well, you eat, well, you can grow natively, right?
Refrigeration will change things.
Refrigeration.
No refrigeration.
And apples were always historically a big crop around here.
Yep.
So, I imagine there's apple, this, that and everything. Not to mention all the things that you can ferment apple juice into.
Yes.
The wines, the vinegars, the, right?
Yeah.
So, it's all, you know, I would say look for that.
Yep.
That stuff as well.
Gwen?
Yeah?
Tony, Gwen, with her permission, you, would you, could you give me a website if you are using this to solicit recipes? I can put the, in the article that if you want them to be sent to you.
Oh, yeah, here, just. Right here. I was going to give these out. Right to George also, so they would have it. Just send them.
Is there anything, the year of the 300th or any time between now and then where one might be able to eat some of the stuff in your cookbook? Is that part of the plan? Is there any?
Oh, I hadn't thought of that, no.
There's always a blueberry pancake breakfast.
Yes. That would be an interesting, like a sneak peek.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Sneak peek event, you know, woodchucks stew or something. Affixedated with woodchucks, aren't you?
I, I hope you're not killing them with shotguns first.
No, 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 no. Do like a, like, I like that sneak peek, do something next summer.
You could do a certain amount of pot.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, wild game suppers and stuff.
Yeah. Cornbread stuffing that was always. No roadkill. Okay.
Can I, if you don't mind?
Yeah, yeah.
Give you each one of these and I'll pick up John's recipe.
One bro recipe already.
Two, one for my mother and for me.
Perfect.
Of course, I'm right either, but whatever.
I already give it to my job.
This is something I'm going to be putting back in Facebook, you know, on a different town.
Your feet there. Yeah, yeah, don't trip on the wire. It's.
Thanks. I'm going to go to Julie actually. Should I give one to Donna?
I'll get it to her.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is fun. I'll look forward to seeing your recipes.
We all know when you get the recipe for woodchuck where it come from.
Or hard cider.
Throwing it out there, you know.
I want to state for the record that that's not cooked.
No, it's not. All right, just for the folks at home, I'll just, I'll just repeat that Gwen Friend is looking for recipes to incorporate in the 300th Anniversary Cookbook. You could, I would probably leave them here at the town hall if you just happen to be close by, or you can email them to her at friendishlee, that's F-R-I-E-N-D-I-S-H-L-Y at gmail dot com. And, yeah, make them good. Sounds good. Sounds good.
For those of us that are older, if you remember, this is not going to friendly as a restaurant.
No. Definitely not. Alright. So, that's all you had for us tonight, Gwen?
Yeah, I want to take up too much.
Oh, okay, well, that's.
There's a lot of other things I could talk to you about, but.
Yeah. Alright, well, thanks for, thanks for sharing that with us. And, and that is actually the end of our agenda here. Our action items for next meeting, as I said, review the edited, the, the copy of the road standard, road design standards for next time, and that's pretty much all we've got. Any other, any other business, anybody?
On the old town office over there. Do we have any sort of status, or is that, could we put off?
I, I'm ready to do something on it as soon as I can find an electrician that wants to do it. That's the, that's the holdup.
What are you going to do over there, Chris? Rewire everything?
The, well, we got to, we got to get it up to code from an electrical point of view, which is, dealing with exposed wires, exit lighting, getting the breaker panel up to code, it's, it's a rat's nest, essentially, right now. Those are the big things.
Do we have a mice problem in that building? I mean, it's been dormant now for five months, or whatever.
We did when it was in use, we had it treated this spring.
So, we are keeping up with that, to the fact that it doesn't?
We haven't seen any new evidence, there's no new sources of food there now, so, that's a good thing. But it's getting cold, so, you know, this is the next time.
Just because if it sits for another, you know, just kidding, it's going to make it more of a mess than what we're dealing with.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're going to, we're going to keep the heat on at a very low level, just to, you know, keep it.
Keep the pipes from freezing.
And, yeah, if anybody knows an electrician that's got time and interest, I'll walk you through it tomorrow. Ready to, have a general scope. We just got to get it to code and clean up the, the stuff that's there, it's not even close to code. We could also use a clean-out on the heating ducts, and, no, that's a secondary thing, the electrical parts. That's what we need to get back into using it again.
So, who, we haven't made a list of people we've contacted, there's no one?
I've called the folks that have done work for us in the past, I've walked a couple people through it, I just can't get quotes out of them to do it, so. And, actually, I haven't been to hear from one, that somebody was going to connect me with, but I haven't heard from that person yet, so. But, you got any ideas, I'll, I'll call whoever.
Something though, like if, again, I could reach out to the Concord, which has members from Nottingham, see if maybe if the supplies are bought in the town, they'll do the work.
Sure, yeah, great. We'll, we'll pay somebody to do the work, that's not, that's not the problem.
Yeah, it's not like we're having an underbid, saying, "Oh, we only want to pay $5,000 for it."
No, no, we want to get it right.
They have to do so many hours on the community service side, so, maybe I can reach out to them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to say, to revoke on voting hours.
You're welcome. Yeah, we're going to, we're going to try to make it work, and. Yeah, we're going to be, you know, we're going to be there early with them, so. Alright, anything else? Second. All in favor? Meeting's adjourned.